Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Heideman.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Any additions to license changes to the agenda?
I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. Support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, meetings of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move that the minutes of 10:16-14 Commission Meeting and the 10:06-14 Standing Committee Meetings be approved and filed. 11:06. 10:16 and 11:06.
Second.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, Proclamations. First one, proclamation recognizing Carol Bublitz. Carol's in attendance? Tommy, you want to go up there?
This time I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing Carol Bublitz, MSU Extension Director's Award for Meritorious Service.
Support.
And Mr. Riley, do the presentation.
Good evening. Come right up.
Where are you? Where are you going to go?
Tonight, I got the pleasure of doing the proclamation recognizing Carol Bublitz from Michigan State University Extension Director's Award for Meritorious Service. Now, whereas Carol Bublitz has served the citizens of St. Clair County for 15 years as a food nutrition program instructor for Michigan State University Extension, and whereas Carol has distinguished herself among her peers as a go-to person for create problem-solving operation relations in the community and a can-do attitude, and whereas Carol is known as a staff member who can find additional resources and create new partnerships to meet the needs of MSU Extension clients in her program area, whereas Carol is considered a mentor by many within MSU Extension and with the outside agencies, institutions they partner with, and whereas Carol has been recognized by MSU Extension as a recipient of the 2014 Director's Meritorious Service Award for contributions to the organization and her community in program excellence, professionalism, and support for MSU Extension mission of improving lives through an educational process that provides resources to critical needs, issues, and opportunities. And therefore, be it proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners on behalf of its citizens does hereby adopt this proclamation, recognizing the honor bestowed upon Carol Bublitz to by MSU Extension and congratulates her on her years distinguished service to the citizens of St. Clair County. Proclaim this 20th day of November 2014 Jeff Bowman, Chairperson, Steve Semasko, Vice Chairperson, Carl Tomian, Howard Heideman, Tom Riley, Dave Rushing, and Bill Greitop, Commissioners. Congratulations, and you only have to make a half hour speech.
Thank you all. I'm very grateful to be part of this team. There was a time when my family suffered economically and we received assistance from the programs in this county, and it's been my delight and pleasure to be able to begin to repay some of that support. I'm very grateful. This job is an honor. Thank you.
Carol's actual 19th anniversary is today with our organization, so that's kind of neat. Actually, it's, well, it was 19 yesterday. We had this argument this morning. But anyway, the words that you read in the resolution are right on with Carol. And I want you to know that this is the highest honor that we provide by the Director's Office over on campus to an individual in Carol's classification, and it's just really well-deserved. And if I could also have her husband and son, Frank and Frank, come up, as well as the rest of the staff, we'd like to get pictures real quick.
Yeah, absolutely.
That be okay? Okay. It will be just a second.
Yep. Nothing but time.
Do you join us, like you others? Do you like? Well, as long as we don't say anything that you like.
Do you guys want to take it in front of the?
Yeah. One of the ugly guys out.
Yeah.
Well, that's up to you.
Whatever their family.
Okay, that's a good idea.
These people are busy. They want us to hurry up.
We had a motion and a second on it. All in favor of the proclamation?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Item B, the MSU celebrating the 100th anniversary of the signing of the Smith-Lever Act. Mr. Rushing?
Mr. Bixler, would you like to?
Sure. I got one on that to read, so if I can do that.
Do we need a motion first?
You can.
I can do that first, if you want to do. I'd like to move to approve the proclamation recognizing Michigan State University's Extension 100th Anniversary.
Support.
Right. I'd like to read the proclamation. Celebrating the 100th Anniversary of the Signing of the Smith-Lever Act, founding legislation on the nationwide cooperative extension system, whereas May 8, 2014 marked the centennial of the signing of the Smith-Lever Act, which established cooperative extension, the nationwide transformational educational system operating through land-grant universities in partnership with federal, state, and local governments, and whereas Michigan State University Extension is a critical component of the three-part land-grant university mission and works collaboratively with research, particularly the agricultural experiment station system and academic programs in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and six U.S. territories to reach traditional and underserved audiences in all communities, and whereas Michigan State University has held true to its mission to help people improve their lives through an educational process that applies knowledge to critical issues, needs, and opportunities while adapting to changing times and adapting new technologies, and whereas cooperative extension prepares people for healthy, productive lives through sustained education, breaking the cycle of poverty and reducing expenditures for federal and state assistance programs, and whereas cooperative extension engages with rural and urban learners through practical, community-based, and online approaches resulting in the acquisition of knowledge, skills, and motivation to help people make healthful lifestyle choices, ensure a safe and abundant food supply, encourage community vitality, and grow the next generation of leaders. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners on behalf of its citizens does hereby adopt this proclamation, recognizing the significance of the Smith-Lever Act to the establishment of cooperative extension. We extend our deep appreciation to the Office of the MSU Extension for their distinguished service to the St. Clair County and urge our fellow citizens to join us with heartfelt thanks and gratitude. Proclaim this 20th day of November 2014 Jeff Bone, Chairperson, Steve Semasko, Vice Chair, Carl Tomian, Howard Heideman, Tom Riley, Dave Rushing, and Bill Greitop, Commissioners. Join?
For some days that I feel like I'm 100 years old, much like Mr. Riley. Tom and I tease each other because we have the same hairline, although I see Mr. DeBoer is catching up rather quickly. As you can see from our staff, they don't look like they're 100 years old. They're a lot younger than me, but it's been a pleasure to serve the first 100 years under the Smith-Lever Act, and I'm sure that you can count on your MSU Extension to take us into the next 100 years as well. So, thanks for the recognition.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve items 7A and 7H as laid out on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
6:00.
All in favor on 6:00?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, housekeeping details. Reports standing, special committees. Mr. Greitop.
Yeah, one short item. I just wanted to announce that our Sheriff, Tim Donlin, was reappointed and is serving in the Office of Secretary/Treasurer for the Michigan Sheriff's Association. That swearing-in was done by the Governor, so I think it's an honor to have 83 counties, and our guy is right up there in the top with one of the officers, so congratulations to him. That's it.
Okay. David?
Nothing.
Tom? Steve? No report. Carl? I'm going to take a pass, too. Item number nine, citizens wishing to address the board. Saying none, unfinished business, saying none. Item number 11, eight, approval of county dispersments.
This time I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments of October 2014 in the amount of $35,122,873.63.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item B, the Administrative Controller's Employment Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposed employment agreement with William Kaufman as the Administrator Controller with an effective date of June 1, 2014.
Support.
Carl, I appreciate you working on this and getting it together. Other than that, nothing. Roll call.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item C, the Agreement with the Community Mental Health Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder Seeking Safety Services.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve the agreement with the Community Mental Health for post-traumatic stress disorder seeking safety prevention services for a term of 10/1/14 through 9/30/15 in the amount of $12,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item E, the 2015 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Contract.
This time I'd move to approve FY, the Fiscal Year 2015 Day Reporting Supervision Agreement with Huron House Incorporated for term of 10/1/14 through 9/30/15 in the amount of $25,000.
Support.
Discussion. Write it down. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item F, the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Charnia Township.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Charter Township of Charnia for the term of 01/01/15 through 12/31/17 in the amount of $441,348.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item G, the Law.
Did we skip 11D?
E.
The hearing house?
No.
The Mental Health Court Grant Program, which one?
I'm sorry.
What's it?
Did we skip?
E.
E, okay. 2015 Mental Health Court Grant Program Contract.
I would move to approve the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program for fiscal year 2015 contract in the amount of $213,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Going to item G now, the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Fort Grashet Township.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with the Charter Township of Fort Grashet for a term from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2017 in the amount of $2,079,958.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item H, the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Port Huron Township.
This time I'd like to move to approve the Law Enforcement Service Agreement with the Charter Township of Port Huron for a term of 1/1/15 through 12/31/17 in the amount of $238,728.
Support.
Discussion.
Bill? I just wanted to, I'm sorry, pass on the Sheriff's note of interest on this that there's an increase of six hours per day, seven days a week, so there'll be 42 hours additional to this township. He's going to be coming back to us with a manning table change sometime in the very near future, but sometime before he hires.
Okay. Same message I was going to pass along. All right. Any other discussion on that? Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item I, the Letter of Agreement with the Community Mental Health for the 2015 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve fiscal year 2015 Letter of Agreement with St. Clair County Community Mental Health for Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Prevention Services for inmates in the amount of $60,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item J, the Aeronautics Advisory Board Reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Robert Benatz, North Representative, and to reappoint David Corby, West Representative, to the Aeronautics Advisory Board, each for a three-year term expiring September 13, 2017.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item K, the Blue Utter Area Transit JRC Funding and Restoration Alternative Fuel Tax Credit.
Move to adopt Resolution 14-45, Job Access Reverse Commute Funding, and Resolution 14-46, Restoration of Alternative Fuel Tax Credit.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item L, the Extension of the DPW Leachate Pretreatment Contract.
This time I'd like to move to approve the extension of the agreement with the St. Clair County Department of Public Works for the Leachate Pretreatment Services for a term of 01/1/15 through 12/31/15 in the amount of $495,511.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item M, the Fort Grashet County Park Lease Renewal.
This time I would move this board to approve the First Amendment to the lease agreement for the Fort Grashet Township Park with the Detroit Water and Sewerage Departments for a 10-year term expiring 12/31/2025. I would like to second Commissioner Semasko's motion.
Discussion on it. Roll call.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item N, the Landfill Residential Waste Rate Increase Recommendation. I've got Matt in attendance this evening, if anybody is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to increase on a disposal fee for MSW residential waste to $25.50 per ton.
Support.
Just a couple things that I'd like to emphasize with that increase. We've talked a lot about it. There hasn't been an increase since 1999, a $6 per ton increase. Average house we're tracking is around a ton, maybe a ton and a quarter, so bottom line is how much does it cost residents? It's around 50 cents, 60 cents per month increase. All the expense in a hauling contract is generally the pickup and disposal, you know, the trucking piece of it. The disposal component of it is a very small portion. I know we looked originally, possibly earlier this year, at maybe an $8 per ton increase. We have increased some volumes. We have talked to all the cities, townships, I mean, they're all well aware of it, had many meetings with that, and that's where we're going to land for the time being. So, Steve?
I would just note that what I found particularly compelling on the decision to increase the rate was the value of the landfill space, the regional costs, and regional similar landfills statewide, countywide, nationally, that I felt it was something we needed to look at from a business perspective that currently was undervalued in a sense.
Well, we spent a lot of time, long-term, planning. Carrie worked with Matt, and, you know, we had projections as far as the long-term, as far as, you know, landfill's, what we're building to sell right now, it's $2.5 million, you know? I mean, so you can spend a lot of money at your landfill. You need sufficient cash reserves, so it just fits the long-term thing. David?
I also serve on the Planning Commission for Riley Township. We had a meeting Monday night. Our Township supervisor was there and told them that we would be discussing this, and I also told them about potentially contacting with the county, so there may not be an increase for any municipality that may want to contact. You have referenced with Cockville, and I believe Marysville also, where their cost actually went down even though the potential rate increase of 50 cents per household, their actual cost for, if they contract with the county, could go down. I've also been at every one of my township's meetings and give them a rundown on all of this for the six townships I represent, already informed all the boards.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time, like I said, educating the cities, municipalities, townships, all the above, multiple meetings on the landfill. Bill?
Yeah, I would just like to ask a question. We had talked about what this is going to do, or what this is going to translate into for the local people. Would, if we raised it $6, would we expect the township to then raise it that same $6?
Majority of the municipal hauling contracts, and Matt has all the contracts for the different townships, they have in their contracts, if the landfill rates go up, then there is an increase in, I mean, those are generally the clauses and pass-through. Is it in everybody's contract, or a good lion's share of them? I mean, yeah.
Most of them.
Most of them, yeah.
Then the township in turn would raise the rates to the citizens by that $6?
I think it really, the township then ultimately has the say on what their increase is. I already know, Bill, you're talking because they have some discussion down in your area as far as what the proposed increases were, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, they raised it 10 in Clay.
We do have some townships, though, that do not have contracts for waste disposal, and their citizens are entering into individual agreements. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
That is correct. Wales Township currently does not have a contract with the township itself, so there's one example, I believe I have two of them, that do not have a contract with a waste hauler, and they do private citizens' contract with each waste hauler.
Generally, you find that with your smaller townships, you know, half that sort. Steve?
Recall the last time this was adjusted, Jeff? It was some time ago?
1999.
1999.
Yep. And our volumes, and, you know, on the other coin, 368,000 tons in 2003, down to 170 today we're tracking.
I think the, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the meetings that you have headed up, and I know that some of us have met with our townships and cities to discuss this, and I think if people really took a good, a lot of people don't understand what goes on out there and how it looks out there today versus how it was years ago. A lot of people, including myself, many years ago, before I got involved in this part of it, you know, you got a hole, you threw your junk in, that's the way it is, you know, and that's what everybody thought, you know? Well, it's not that way at all. It's really, one of the questions from a gentleman in Marysville that I had was, he didn't understand what went on out there, et cetera, but once he got a eye look at it and understood what was going on out there, and looked at how the water couldn't run off and get into the ditches, et cetera, that was part of his concerns. You fill it up, what about the stuff that's running off the water? That can't happen today, the way that it's constructed. I mean, it's a, people really don't have, even though we've had a lot of classes and trainings and townships, et cetera, people are still a little bit in the dark on what it really is out there and how well it is run. It's a business, but it's very safe, it's organized well, very well managed, and the safety part of it, and I call the safety part of it is where you have runoff and get into your ditches and contamination, et cetera. That doesn't happen and won't happen because of how it is run. And it's just, it is very well organized, very well run. Truthfully, if probably we'd have backed years ago, brought it up a little bit, a few cents and that, we wouldn't be raising it today, $6. It could have been raised years ago and a little bit. It's no different to me than the problem the city of Port Huron ran into on water rates. It's the same deal. They put off and kicked the can down the road, and all of a sudden now we're at a point of raising it. And $6 is not, 50 cents a month for people, I think they can handle that. If we were going up $60, that's a different ballgame.
David?
I just want to make a correlation with the city of Port Huron, you bring that up. That's approximately $11 and some cents per month. This is 50 cents per month. I don't want any misinterpretation.
Yeah, right.
Steve?
Just on Tom's point, it made me think about something. In 1985, when I was an assistant prosecutor, I was assigned to the Salway Management Planning Committee for the Enforcement Mechanism on bringing in out-county trash and so forth, and we had actually, at that time, expending county resources to keep Canadian trash out of the county. There was federal litigation, it went to the Supreme Court, the Kettlewell Landfill. We fought to keep that material out, and that was a nationwide kind of an approach. And now we spin the clock forward to today, and that material, you know, is an item of commerce. It comes through Saint Clair County, drives right over our roads, right through our county, right out to wherever it was going, and now in a very controlled fashion, we have used that Canadian material to increase our revenues at the landfill. And I know there's a lot of, some concern about whether or not we would be accepting this Canadian trash. I just want the record to be clear that it's in a controlled fashion and done on recommendations of our consultants. And with this piece of commerce now, it just seems like the new era. So when Tom says things have certainly changed, here we are in 1985, expending resources to keep it out, and now we've expended resources to manage contracts and get some contracts for that material to fund our bio reactor, increase revenues for the county. So it just, it does show you how things change in a relatively short period of time.
I think '92 was the ruling on the commerce issue with the, that if I'm not mistaken, right in there.
Early '90s, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the benefit of those citizens that may be watching the meeting, I'd also call their attention to some of the graphs and charts that were attached to Matt's report and the statistics that are in there. If they have, if they have some interest in where we've been, you pointed out that we've suffered a substantial loss in volume at the landfill, but there's a very interesting graph that illustrates that over the past several years.
Okay, anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item O, the Light Station Historical Preservation Easement Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Historic Preservation Agreement for the Fort Gracia Lighthouse as presented in our agenda packet.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Program Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I am in charge of lighthouses tonight. I would move that we approve the Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Grant in the amount of $55,000.
Support?
Just so I know, Mark's in here. Mark, how many visitors last year to the lighthouse? You don't have to crawl and get up there.
Sixty-two, over 61,000.
Over 61,000.
In three years.
Three years, okay. Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been huge. People that are in the lighthouses, they travel all over to look at them things big time.
I'd like to compliment the Parks and Recreation Commission taking over the lighthouse project. It's a very important historical resource for our whole county, and it was in a terrible state of repair. It was no longer open for tours and visits, and it has come a long way, and I'm glad to see Parks and Recreation Commission still aggressively pursuing funding to maintain that resource.
Steve?
You say I think it is an example of good stewardship. When that property came up, it was offered to the city of Port Huron first. They were not interested. Our Parks and Rec Department with this board's involvement as well saw to it that we took advantage of that, and look where it's at today. That's some pretty incredible amounts of visitation.
Yeah, oh, huge tourism piece.
It really is a jewel for the parks system, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Q, the Resolution 14-47, the 2014 County at Large Drain Request.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to adopt Resolution 14-47, approving the county at large drain assessments in the amount of $537,136.99 for fiscal year 2014.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Resolution 14-52, Adoption of the 2015 General Fund Budget.
At this time, I would like to move to adopt Resolution 14-52, adopting the 2015 General Fund Budget.
Support?
Any discussion on it? Steve?
I had one question from a citizen noting that we generally do that in December, and now we're doing it in November. And I wasn't sure if that was necessarily true, that it was normally passed in December.
Eh, I mean...
I know we have over the years, but there was no particular timing issue here.
No, I think it was workshops, you know. I reflect on my 10 years. I mean, we really struggled to get a budget together and consensus.
There were times we did in December because we didn't have it done earlier, but...
Didn't have it done earlier, yeah, yeah. A lot of kicking, a lot of, man, I don't even want to go back to those days, but that's another story for another day. I got to commend Bill and Carrie for working with, you know, the elected officials and all the department heads on putting this thing together. This has been the easiest budget cycle personally that I've been involved in in 10 years. And when Mr. Kaufman said that you two were going to take that on, and I was like, man, good luck. But it's been, it's been, it's been good, it's been great. And some of the newer commissioners were never fortunate to be part of those heated discussions back in the days.
That does not, however, mean that we don't appreciate it. And I think, you know, the governor's very proud of the fact that he's been able to get the stated budget adopted in a timely fashion, and I think we should be proud of our staff for having the budget adopted earlier.
One thing, I forget where I gleaned this from, but if I understand correctly, Bill, other counties or municipalities are inquiring of you as to how we do it so well.
Carrie and I have had some calls asking...
They'd like to have the same ease and competence in the budget process that we have, and they actually ask you how you do it, so it's...
Well, I really think the modeling, give a lot of credit to, you know, Sean Grill, the previous administrator, for bringing in the long-term budgeting model, you know, as far as, you know, we were never using that tool at the time, Sean and Bob, and to really, you know, see that and put that out there, and I think to get department heads to understand it too, you know. I mean, the basic, you know, fourth grade, if we don't do anything, you know, here's where we're headed, and that kind of stuff. And it really, you know, putting that out there, and I think when we first started talking about revenue declines and things happening, it was, you know, it was probably a little tough buy-in maybe, you know, for some...
I saw Bob Kemp and his wife Linda at Sam's Club a couple of days ago. He's in town. I invited him to the meeting to take three minutes and talk about the budget, and he declined because they were going to dinner with some friends.
Oh, okay.
But it was, there he was, so he's alive and well.
David?
Just one, I want to reiterate, fine job by our Kaufman and Carrie, but also all the department heads and everybody that's involved in the budget process. It took a lot of teamwork to get this done like we have been doing it. So there's a lot of thanks to go through for a lot of the employees and everybody throughout the county.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item S, the 2015 Pension and Retiree Healthcare Contribution.
This time I would ask that the board consider the, and establish to set the contribution rate for the pension benefits at $4,62,123, which is approximately 21% of payroll and a 2.5% of payroll for retiree healthcare benefits for year 2015.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item T, the Blue Cross and BCBS Schedule A Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield 2015 Schedule A as presented.
Support?
Discussion. Just one quick comment. I have to go speak to the retirees at their annual Christmas party coming up here regarding the retiree healthcare, just talk about where we're at as far as pension contributions, some of that stuff, and really, I think the message is that we have, it's not on our radar screen as of today that we're looking to make any, you know, changes to the retiree healthcare portion. We went through the last actuarial report, and I think we're still not in great shape, make it no mistake, but I think we're 26% bill or 28% carry funded now, and we've got a 13 to 15-year window, which, you know, when we first became board chairman, it was the five to seven, and, you know, if nothing happens, you guys are, you know, done. So it's going to continue to be an issue that we're going to have to work on and tweak and make changes down the road, but I think for this year, it hasn't been anything that's been, you know, front and center with us, so. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item U, the Intervention Center Security System.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to award the agreement for the replacement and upgrade of the existing video security system at the Intervention Center to Conti Corporation in the amount not to exceed $210,000, and to award the maintenance agreement for Intervention Security, or Intervention Center Security System to Conti Corporation in the amount not to exceed $47,000 per annum. Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item V, the RISA Payroll Services Agreement Extension.
This time I'd like to move to approve the extension of the agreement with RISA for payroll services for a term of 1115 through 123117 in the amount of $123,000.
Support?
Discussion.
Just a little.
Nobody's aware, RISA does a great job for us. This is only a $1,000 increase, no increase, it's a three-year contract with an average of $41,000 per year.
I was here when we used to do it in-house. Steve, you might have been on the board at that time when we made those changes and sent it over to RISA. RISA actually does the payroll for a lot of the school districts, a lot of the other stuff. They do, they do a good job with it, and so. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item W, the Health Department Staff Development Training Day Early Closures.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Health Department request to close at noon on December 12 for staff development.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item X, the Return of the Funds to Parks and Rec Commission and Library Board of Trustees, 318 Grand River Avenue.
This time I would move to approve the rescission of the Memorandum of Understanding with Parks and Recreation Commission and Library Board Regarding the Purchase of 318 Grand River Avenue in Return of Funds Provided to Each of the respective boards.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Y, the Resolution 1444, the Collective Bargaining Agreement Extension for the Corrections Command Officer COAM.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to adopt Resolution 14-44, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement extension with the Corrections Command Officers COAM.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Resolution 1448, Adopting the 80/20 Cost Share Model.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 14-48, adopting the 80/20 Cost Share Model as set forth in Public Act 152 of 2011.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Item AA, the Residential Cognitive Substance Abuse Treatment Agreement, Catholic Charities of Southeast Michigan.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the Residential Cognitive Substance Abuse Treatment Agreement with Catholic Social Services of Southeast Michigan for a term of 10114 through 93015 in the amount of $197,000.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item 12, the Administrator's Report.
First of all, I want to thank the board for your support over the last couple of years, and I look forward to working with you for...
Next Friday.
...the future. There you go. I certainly appreciate the opportunity that you've given me, even though when it began, I believe I recall being pulled into a back room and strong-armed by the chair and the vice chair. But I thank you for the opportunity. I've enjoyed the challenges, and I certainly want to thank staff, Carrie, Jenny, and Chris as well for making this transition for me as easy as it has been.
As I say, you were the best choice, the three lousy ones, so...
Best choice of what?
Three lousy ones. I just, I just want to, I want to...
You know, you were really inspiring leaders.
No, it's funny, when we went, and I, and this is, and when Sean had first was leaving, I love telling the story, Sean contacted me, I got ahold of Steve, and we called all the other elected officials, and we posed the question, everybody, and said, Sean's going to be going, we're looking for, do we have an internal candidate, or do we go for a national search? And I can tell you, every person that I talked to internally, as far as elected officials, said Bill Kaufman. There wasn't anybody that put someone else's name in there, so it was...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're the only two on this board now that were here when Bill came on. Was anybody else on when we hired him? Were you here when we hired Bill?
Probably right just when we first...
Yeah, I was...
Just got on, yeah, just got on, so...
But before that new board took over...
That was October, and we took office, so...
Well, that last lame duck session when Sean was leaving, and we had to decide where to go with that, some of the board members at that time wanted to do a national search. That's what they thought we should do. And Jeff and I were very firm, we had this kind of support, and we had a great candidate, and we made him interim director for some time, and we kidded you about the fact we never really straightened that out, but this clears that up. The progression on the scale is like everyone else now, you're on a level playing field with everyone else, and you were the right choice. I was always very firm with that, I'm someone from Saint Clair County, someone who would leave a legacy for the county, that has family here, you were well-known, it was a real natural call for me, and it worked out very well. And you continue to carry that forward, and we haven't had any diminution in the credibility of the office or with your contacts with the department heads. And believe me, when Sean was here, there were, there were a lot of issues that I was, had directed to me about the relations with the administrator's office. It was not on the level it is today, and so I really appreciate the fact that you're staying on and that you're here for the foreseeable future, so.
Again, thank you for your support. Again, thank you for your support. Many of you may have seen an announcement come across that Mercy Hospital has been sold to Prime Healthcare. It's our understanding that the Port Huron Hospital is the only one that is going to be sold at this point to Prime Healthcare. Staff has already begun making contacts with the hospital to determine how this may affect any of the agreements that we have with them for services. So if, if it does have an adverse impact, we'll certainly let you know and begin developing plans to deal with it as necessary. The Convention Center, in your agenda tonight was the monthly budget report that I'm sure all of you saw. As you can see, there are still, the project has a ways to go before we hit the $9 million mark. I believe the balance was somewhere around...
3.3.
Three million left on the project. And again, all the major components have been completed. There is still a lot of work to be done. I can give you an update on some of those things. It's my understanding, late this afternoon, I received word that all of the glass, the exterior glass, has been installed, so the facility has now been closed in except for a small area up front where the roof will be going on over the next couple of weeks. The, that will completely enclose the facility. Those areas where you see bare metal exposed on the outside will be covered by metal panels over the next two weeks as well. The, the asphalt work that needed to be done near the loading dock, and the loading dock itself has been completed. The doors, we expect to be delivered for that back-of-house area before Christmas. So again, we still have a lot of work to do on that facility. It's, I think it's going to move very, very quickly over the next 60 to 90 days, so we'll continue providing you with reports and updates.
I was actually up there today with former Commissioner Ward, took him through the building.
Really?
Yeah, we met up for lunch, and I walked into the facility today, so.
Did you like it?
Yep, he was a happy man.
And I, I'd like to pass along the fact that I've had a couple of very positive comments about the appearance of, of the center, and I think, I think the exterior of it is beautiful, and I think they've done a really great job, you know, within the budget that, that they were allocated. The whole team deserves credit for the, for the appearance of it.
Steve.
Just want to make sure, Bill, and I know this is true, but it doesn't get reported sufficiently, in my opinion, but that project is on time.
Yes.
And it is within budget.
Correct.
One other thing, Steve, too, and I know there's a couple of us that sit on the change order committees. Yeah, and I think we've had eight different meetings so far.
Yep.
And money in, money out. Orion, I think, has done, has done a very good job looking for value-added type things. Carl, you've been part, part of some of that stuff, and I mean, we're like right there, you know, maybe, we have a contingency fund for it, but I think it's, what are we, $10, $12,000 somewhere.
Twenty-five.
All the big-ticket items, you know, I mean, some of the stuff that site, and, I mean, it's, it's, they're doing a really good job of tracking that thing for, and Jenny's doing a heck of a job on that thing, too.
I think one of the, one of the things that I've really liked up there is the fact of how everybody's getting along. The contractors, I mean, they're really meshing together. A good example, I think, of how the good thinking is going on is when they decide to put the wallboard on and, instead of painting the walls, et cetera, in there, which wouldn't have looked very nice, in my opinion, but, but I think the way they're doing it, and the problem is, if you'd have put the wall plugs in the floor, or put the wall plugs in the wall, and, you know, it sure as a dickens, if you would have had a wall plug right there, I really wanted it over here. Well, now with going to the wallboard and, and drywall it down, you can put them anyplace you want. So I mean, there's thinking like that going on through the whole building. It's, it's opened some eyes up. I mean, it's like building a home. You get into it, and you start building something, all of a sudden, you realize, gee, if I'd done this a little bit different, or can I do it different? And every time they do that, sometimes the price goes up a notch. More times, we've seen her go the other way. So I think it's, it's really been, and the thing I was involved in, when the jail was built, and there's, I have, I wouldn't even go into problems that I found in that situation, but what I do like is this time, the whole board is on board with what's going on, and not only that, the, with the bill, with the change order committee that's been set up, when you get called in, up, either up or down, we're, we're right on top of it. Where before, with the jail, we were in the dark and didn't even realize it was darkness there. This is totally different, and the people I know have been worried about, are we going to blow it over budget again? You do it every time, which isn't really true, but in the jail, it certainly was. It was the way it was run, and it's wasn't, it turns out, it wasn't, there's a big story to why that happened. But the main thing on this one is that we're, we're doing it the right way, and it's being managed properly. So I'm, I can honestly say I'm pretty pleased with the people we got working up there and how the board has pulled together with this.
I just want to chime in a little bit, I guess, to echo, to go back to the jail. Jail was 10 years ago. We've done tower builds, we've built...
Day Treatment Night Watch.
Day Treatment Night Watch. We've done a lot of capital projects around here in the 10 years that have been on the board, and I can tell you, we haven't blown one yet, so when I, when I...
You see, the legacy still is there from the jail.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, I hear the jail thing, and I always tell, totally go, that was 10 years ago, you know, I mean, it's...
So you're saying this team is better than the previous?
Well, he was on that team, too.
No, I wasn't. Just for the record.
I thought that was, oh, you came on right after it was done.
Thirteen days in.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, we don't have enough time to go into that one, at all.
But, no, we've done a lot of other stuff, and we've been on it. I think to the point, we've been so sensitive about that, too. We understand, you know, when you talk about jail, you talk about, you know, this building, whatever it may be, that those things, you know, is what it is. David.
We can just go on and have a lot of examples with your work with the Retirement Board and other boards that have been worked with, the transparency. We've been upfront, met with, whether they like the conversation or not, we've met with who we represent. I've been out at a lot of townships, we've even met with the Retirement Board, but any issue, we've been upfront, honest, so there, everything's been out there, whether they liked it or not, the landfill, we've talked about that, but just any discussion, we've been upfront, had everybody a part of our discussions, and that also a reflection on the budget, too.
Okay, a couple, a couple other quick things. The interviews for the Veterans Affairs Director will be occurring next week. The Veterans Affairs Board will be reporting back to us who they've selected for that position. We hope to have someone that we can introduce to you probably very shortly after the first of the year.
Bill, does somebody from Administration sit in on any of those, or...
On the interviews, yes. There is a three-person committee made up of one individual from the Veterans Affairs Board, and the other two individuals are from Administration that will be part of that interview team. The, just a reminder, the Day Treatment Night Watch Annual Thanksgiving Luncheon is tomorrow. If you missed that invitation when it went out, it's tomorrow at, at noon at Day Treatment Night Watch. The upcoming, at your December meeting, Kerry will be presenting to you the 2015 Special Revenue Fund Budgets. Those are budgets that are primarily funded by millages and other sources, so you'll see those in December. You'll also see, Kerry will be bringing to you the 2014 Year-end Budget Amendments as well. I do want to thank Kerry for all the work that she's done on the budget, as well as all the department heads and elected officials. You know, I think the relationships that have been created over the years is really what makes it easy, easier for us today than it hasn't been in the past. And I got to let you know, every, every person that does call and ask, "How do you do it? How do we do it?" I stress two things, and one is the relationships need to be built, they need to trust one another, and the other issue is, is they've got to find a way to steal Kerry from us, and we certainly won't let that happen. So thank you very much, Kerry, for everything that you do, as well as department heads and elected officials. That's it.
How long have you been here now, Kerry?
Fifteen years. Do we need a motion to receive?
You have a motion to receive and file the Administrator's Report.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business. Steve.
I've got a communication from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission dated November 12th. Anyone else get that at their, at their place?
What was it, Steve?
It's on the Rover Pipeline.
Yes.
Did you get those, too?
Oh, yeah.
Are we going to ask for that environmental impact statement? I mean, it wouldn't make sense for me to. I know when they, we had those informative meeting, informational meetings, I'd signed up for some information, I'd get some emails, but I thought that we should include this, perhaps maybe the county administrator should get that, and then maybe make a link on our website for the affected community, so we can have some informational piece out there.
I know Senator Pavlo's office has been on that. I've been in a couple different meetings with him at some sort of stuff, and they've...
Also, if you got the memo from Senator Pavlo, is that in Richmond, in December, they're going to have a meeting on that.
Well, there's actually four of them. There's, these are scoping meetings, Thursday, December 11th, Mancini Banquet, Holiday and Gateway Center, Flint, Michigan, December 10th, Adrian High School in Adrian, December 1st. There's a meeting tonight in Chelsea. I just thought we should have some, something on our website, a link or some basic information there for the five or six townships that it runs through, so.
Goes through three of mine.
Pardon me?
It goes through three of my townships.
Mark?
It'll go through Long Island Park.
Really?